Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regular council meeting here at Waburn City Council, held here in the Waburn Chambers at 6:00 PM here Monday, September 11th, 2017. Tonight we'll go over the agenda and have some interesting information for you. First, on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, held August 28th, 2017. Do you have a motion for that, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Carrie Dunam, sleep. Are there any requests of additions to the agenda? There's none, so with that, we'll move forward. There are any public hearings and notices at this point in time? There are none of those, so we'll move forward to the first original communications, delegations, and proclamations. I have a proclamation here for the Firefighters' National Memorial Day. It reads as such: "Whereas the city of Waburn recognizes the sacrifice and commitment of not only the city firefighters, but also those throughout the country, whereas firefighters put their safety on the line in service to Canadians, Firefighters' National Memorial Day will allow us to commemorate those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Therefore, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of the city of Waburn, hereby do proclaim Sunday, September 10th, 2017, as Firefighters' National Memorial Day." With that, fire chief, would you wish to say any words towards that, or not?
Not this time, your worship.
Thank you. No words for it with that. We move forward on to reports of council. We have the water treatment plant report. Counselor Bailey, would you please deliver that?
Good evening and thank you, your worship. The report comes from our manager over there, Shabir, and for August 2017. On testing, all bacteriological samples that were taken showed negative results. The monthly report was submitted to environmental protection officer for their review and filed in accordance with the requirements of our operating permit. Received lab reports, quality samples of THMs and HAA's, general chemistry, organics, and microsteins. THMs, and I got this one now, is trihalamethadans, and I'm not going to repeat it again. There we go. And the HAA are halo-acidic acids, so everybody remember that, please. Are 61.30% higher than permit limits. New reservoir and UV system will drop these values. Organic general chemistry and microsidence results are within the operating permit. Don Turner, EPO of Water Security Agents, completed his inspection and audit. Inspection report is attached to this report. Staff stated weekly testing of alkalinity and hardness of the raw and treated water to be monitored monitors quality of water. In maintenance, general maintenance is ongoing. Water treatment plant had some serious problems or issues in August. Smoke detected in plant 200 electrical panel. Chlorine gas pressure line failed at night and failure of main distribution of pump four during the weekend. Electrical panel caught on fire during the troubleshooting of the pump. The electrician was injured and sent to hospital. Incident report has been submitted to HR manager. The breaker of the distribution pump number four has been replaced. Decommissioned lines, silo, disconnected electrical, water and air connections is ready to be demolished. First Avenue upgrade is put on hold until new reservoir construction has been completed. Discussed with city manager and decided to buy a new pump. The new pump will replace the existing old pump if fails during the construction of the new reservoir. Work on design and layout of the chlorine towers toner is also being looked at. In operations, raw water drawn from Nickel Lake for the month of August 2017 was 196.6 million liters. The level of water of Nickel Lake dropped 18.6 centimeters in August. The current level is from overflow is 66 centimeters low. The alkaline and hardness and tribidity parameters of raw water are increasing. And that is my understanding because of the low water and the staleness of the water. And that is my report, your worship.
Thank you. Do you have any update on the status of the electrician?
No, your worship, I don't have that information.
Okay.
I don't think it was serious, but, you know, extremely serious from what I understand, but it was an incident.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? At this point, move on to Building Department report. Counselor Van Betje?
Thank you, your worship. This is the August planning, development, and building report for 2017. Building permits, here in the month of August 2017, the city of Waburn issued five building permits with a total construction value of $423,000. Permits were as follows: one permit issued for commercial addition alteration with a construction value of $40,000. Three permits issued for residential garages, house additions with a construction value of $133,000. One permit issued for a new RTM dwelling unit with a construction value of $250,000. Year-to-date, we have issued 53 building permits with a total construction value of just over $4.6 million. In August 2016, year-to-date, the city had also issued 53 building permits with a construction value of just over $4.1 million. Development permits. In August 2017, we have issued four development permits, which include installation of two new communication towers, one new industrial metal pipe manufacturing business on Cotto Avenue West, and one new commercial business on Railway Avenue. One zoning request received, reviewed, and issued in August 2017. This building report was put together by licensed building official Amanda Kaufman.
Any questions? If not, we'll move forward. Waburn Agriculture Society, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, thank you, your worship. The Agriculture Society met on August 22nd of 2017. At 7:05 PM, we started. Minutes were moved and seconded by Kelly and seconded by Clay. Let the minutes be adopted as presented. Good visitor that night also, Ron Faulner, attended the meeting to discuss the relating issues to the sales ring area. And what is happening on that, your worship, is that due to the amount of usage and traffic in there, he is suggesting that the dirt be rototilled up and a new layer of sand put in there. And the reason for that is to keep it soft and keep the dust down also. And so the Egg Society will be working with Mr. Faulner on getting that done, probably first thing in the spring after they've used it this winter for storage units. That work will start, hopefully, soon in the spring. And accounts payable moved by Clay and seconded by Carla, that the accounts payable be paid as presented. In correspondence, your worship, SAS Power inspection report was discussed. There was a list of items that we needed to complete before next year's fair and what those were miscellaneous little things that SAS Power wanted the Egg Society to make improvements on, just to have a better quality of electrical supply to the various outlets there. So that will be worked on and complied with. The Waburn Fire Department has requested that the Egg Society sponsor the workshop and the trade show to be held in the rink on September 16th, and that was moved and passed as we sponsored that for the firefighters. In new business, of course, the big question that we discussed for a lengthy period of time, what are we doing next year for the fair? And as everybody will remember, we had at the fair on July 1st area with the 4H, we had a smaller fair there. It seemed to work out well. We also had one at the rodeo, and that was very successful. So now our big issue is finding something that can compatible with both of them or a new working relationship with new people and making those work. There was lots of vandalism around the grounds this past while, and so the Egg Society is looking into doing some more security, locking of things, putting no trespassing signs up. Also, better lighting is what we see may be part of the problem through back of the building, so that's going to be worked on. Jeff and Tyler had worked hard with the dairy show that was here a couple of weekends ago and was very successful. That show was offered to other larger centers and was denied. We were very happy to have them here, and the people were very excited about the facilities and how we looked after them there, so hopefully they can come back. We need to have a work bee that is being organized here for later in September, just to do a few things and fall cleanup for the property out there. Clay said tons of feedback that was very positive from having the rides at the rodeo, and so we're going to continue to work on there. Jeff, our president, expressed that he wanted to thank the board and all the volunteers over the last couple, three months for all the work that was related to the 4H, the fair, and then the rodeo and the fair. It takes a lot of people, and we filled all those ticket booths up with volunteers to take tickets and sell ride events and everything. So Jeff really wanted to express a big thank you to Waburn and the surrounding communities for being wholehearted and part and making this year, after some struggles, very good. Thank you. Our next meeting, your worship, is tomorrow night, by the way.
Very good. Any questions, comments? With not, then just that dairy, we went to that dairy competition, and that was very interesting, and we had many people, very good comments about our city from the people across from B.C., Alberta, and Manitoba. So that was very good, and very good for our city, and that showed them very good hospitality. Our next report, Airport Board, Counselor Mickel, will you please deliver it?
Thank you, worship. The airport met Friday, 8:00 AM at the airport, and here's some of the business from that meeting. Under SMS, there was nothing to report. Under some of our maintenance items that are underway, or most of them are complete, or close to completion. Lighting seen de-electric, repaired the underground power source to taxiway. We see the bulbs and lighted signs are being upgraded to LED, and the work will be completed this fall. The fencing, strictly fencing from Otamusha was awarded the contract last two weeks ago at our council meeting. Light commercial fencing will be installed along the south side of Apron 1 to the existing chain link. Fencing will continue west to the Jersey barriers outside the Tom Kerr Pilot Lounge. Line painting will take place September 16th and 17th, and that is on Saturday and Sunday of this week. And on the secondary runway, as well as hash marks on the taxiway for lighting. Under our managers' report, our co-managers are Jeff Farr and Dennis Manell. The hangars that were demolished are look very good. Now grass is to be seeded, and we're ready for weeds to come immediately. Reflective tape is to be placed on the security gate. North wind sock is in need of replacement, and we have to fill a pothole in Apron 1, and a failed culvert on the taxiway has to be repaired as well. A manager Farr will look into the possibility of installing scoop house primarily anchor the tie-downs in front of the Tom Kerr Lounge. Aircraft movements in July of 2017, 343 movements, August 210. And our next meeting, your worship, is Friday, October 13th, 8:00 AM at City Hall.
Do you have any notes as how many times STARS has landed, or the medical planes have landed, air ambulance has landed?
I'm supposed to report, your worship, that it was them.
There was none? Okay. Very good. Any other comments? If there is none, those will be noted and filed. Thank you. Consent agenda, there is none. We have now motions. Accounts payable, do you have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship. Make a motion that the purchase in the amount of $960,979.02 from August 25th to September 7th, 2017 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Call to question, all in favor? Carrie Dunam, sleep. The next one, Reservoir Expansion Contract, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, your worship.
If you want to turn it on, your mic?
One of those little things we got to do. Your worship, the report, which was provided by the acting city engineer, council has, basically, it identifies that with respect to contract two of the reservoir expansion, roles, you know, roles have been identified, and both internal staff as well as the acting city engineer will be providing some guidance for this construction of the infrastructure associated with this second contract. However, a third-party consultant who will be responsible for site supervision and management of the construction activities. ACOM has put forward a proposal which the acting city engineer is recommending for approval at a total estimated cost of $186,000, which falls within the standard schedule fees for the Engineering Society here in Saskatchewan. The worst-case scenario, if construction continues to January 2019, they will be able to provide that service. However, that's not our expect. We expect the work will be completed prior to that date. And that is the report of the acting city engineer, your worship.
Discussion? First off, resolution, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the proposal submitted by ACOM to supervise and manage the construction and infrastructure associated with contract two of the new reservoir expansion project in the amount of $186,000 be accepted.
Second it?
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Discussion?
Your worship, I just would like, if city manager Hardy could just elaborate a little bit more on what would happen should this work go into January of 2019? I just want to make sure that I have a very good understanding of that.
I mean, we have, we obviously feel that the project will be done on time. We have sort of a clear understanding that ACOM will be able to complete the work within that timeframe. If we were in the position where there were any delays, we would be, you know, at that point in time, we would have discussions with ACOM in terms of the potential for, you know, for continuing that on if necessary. But this would be a normal circumstance, where we just ask for there's enough time to deal with most things, and then as the contracts move forward, of course, we'll be having regular site meetings and making sure that the contract gets completed.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I ask, your worship, because we all know that Mother Nature sometimes can throw curveballs at us when these kind of projects are happening, just want to make sure that we've talked that through.
Yes, and for the note I'd add on to the discussion, when you say the project is going, starting, it'll be starting, the groundbreaking will be this Friday at 10:00 AM at the reservoir site, and so Mr. Dustin Duncan will be there, as well as myself, and members of the council will be there for the ceremony as we move forward with one of our largest projects. Mr. Van Betje?
Yes, city manager Hardy, I have a couple of questions. I have concerns, I guess, because ACOM has, we've been dealt quite a few extras from them already on, in quite a number of occasions on this project. And I'm not understanding some of the wording in regards to, it says, "ACOM's proposal indicated that the following abilities to complete work would be based on experienced staff assigned to the project, appropriate level of effort, ability to work, to complete work without the need for extensive effort, city of Waburn staff." I'm just, is that wording so that they can have more extras? And I would like us to have a firm contract with them because of the fact, because we just haven't been able to get that from them before.
Yeah, that we will be able to get a firm contract, and we'll be working, as we move forward, we'll be making sure that there's appropriate contract, that there's appropriate contract managers and site managers in place from ACOM for the purposes of this contract. We will be providing some supplements, just in terms of what's been provided in the report about how our staff will support it. And particularly, our assistant engineer will have a major role in terms of doing some of the oversight that we're going to need, but ACOM has basically committed to be able to do that site management for us.
And also, going forward and in progress, are we able to hold them to this price and so that six months from now, they don't come to us and say, oh, this will be another $30,000 because of this, and then nine months from now, it's going to be, because they haven't, I don't know, I'm just a little skeptical.
Thank you, through your worship, to Counselor Van Betje. The contract is basically using the standard contract language which is used, which means that when there are necessary changes, that those are done. But other than that, basically, we have a contract that covers them through till January 2019 in terms of the scope. So unless the scope significantly changes, I'm expecting that we'll be pretty firm on the services that we're getting and that are expected from both the acting city engineer and his assistant.
Yes, I just beg that administration be cautious and aware of any, as it goes forward.
Other discussion? I would also like to repeat Mr. Van Betje's caution, too. We don't need to get into one of these costs, plus taking the lowest bidder and the next thing, you know, it is like three times the cost is what, and we have to make sure, we'll trust you to, if you start seeing something like this, any bit, that we will bring it back to council to revisit this contract. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Carrie? The next, tax enforcement?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the tax enforcement arrears list for 2016, presented by the city assessor, be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
In discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Lead water line, sewer line replacement, RFP, Mr. Hardy?
Your worship, thank you. The report, which was provided from the assistant engineer, outlines that in, as a result of getting some federal funding, in the amount of maximum amount of $22.5 million be allocated to replace lead service lines within the city, where there's a 25% city contribution. Just basically wanted to report that the inspections of the water lines were done, and basically, it's been determined that approximately 50 lead service lines currently exist within the infrastructure. We did a request for proposal on SAS tender, and one contractor, KC Environmental Services, submitted a quotation of $976,320 plus taxes to complete the scope of the work. And the assistant engineer is confident that, after checking references, that this company has the ability to provide these services and past clients being satisfied with the quality, timeliness, and the cost of work by this contractor. And therefore, there's a recommendation that's being put forward by the assistant engineer and myself.
I'm prepared to make a motion that the quote from KC Environmental Services, Inc., to replace water and sewer service lines at locations where lead water lines have been identified, in the amount of $976,320 be accepted.
Second it?
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question, is this, from my understanding, there was only one tender on this?
There was, yes, your worship, there was only one, through your worship, there was only one tender on this.
Okay. And where are they from?
The KC Environmental Services is from Okatoks, Alberta.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mickel?
Thank you. Yeah, I struggled with only one quote on a project this size, too. However, there's also timelines, I know, too. March 31st, otherwise, there's funding that'll be pulled. It's nice to have at least two to get your head around what's going on. I understand that. Too bad nobody from Saskatchewan would bid that. You think maybe they're busy, too, but it is what it is. I am concerned, but I know the deadlines are there, too, so I will vote in favor of the motion.
Just before we start talking about the votes here, there's 50 lead lines?
That's, your worship, yes. There were, it was determined that there were 50 lead lines. As I indicated before, the amount of funding that was estimated and submitted to the federal government at the time would bring, would provide a contract up to $2.5 million. This contract, in terms of now that we've known that there's only 50 lead lines, the contract is just over $1 million with taxes, and it also means that we'll be having discussions with the federal government about the availability and a scope change that will address some other pressing needs within the city, within the requested timelines.
The, I'm with Mr. Mickel here and Mr. Bailey, that that's roughly $200,000 per house to do a lead line, which would be roughly about 100?
$20,000, your worship.
$20,000?
$20,000, yes.
No? Fifty times, 50 times, 50 times, yeah, $20,000?
$20,000.
$20,000? Is it $20,000? So, okay, I had my math wrong.
Still got the money.
It's $20,000 per house to do, which is fairly, I guess is fairly reasonable in that sense, but still seems a little bit high for that. We would have thought that some local, our local contractors would have been able to bid, and why would they did not bid, or were they?
Your worship, we would have, I don't know the specifics of this referral being new, but my thoughts would be that, you know, in future, whenever there are these types of contracts that are let, that we certainly make any contractors locally available of knowledge that we're about to put something on SAS tenders, so that they can bid, and they can make a distinction as to whether or not they're going to bid. All we can do, all we can do is open the door, your worship.
That's right. Any further discussion? With that being said, do you have a call to question? All in favor? Moving forward. We now move forward to introduction of bylaws. We have the investment policy is the first bylaw, Mr. Hardy?
Your worship, this bylaw is being updated and amended so that the amount, the maximum amount of money that can be put into any one particular financial institution is, increases from $2 million to $10 million. In terms of putting this forward, staff have made, done due diligence and understand, and basically know that this is not putting any of those investments at any risk whatsoever. They're guaranteed for the full amount.
Mr. Van Betje?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2017-3362, a bylaw to amend the investment policy, bylaw number 2003-3015, for the purpose of increasing the maximum dollar value of any one issuer be read a first time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? All in favor? Carrie?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2017-3362, a bylaw to amend the investment policy, number 2003-3015. the investment policy, number 2003-3015, for the purpose of increasing the maximum dollar value of any one issuer be read a second time.
Second that. All in favor?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2017-3362, a bylaw to amend the investment bylaw, number 2003-3015, for the purpose of increasing the maximum dollar value of any one issuer be given three readings at this meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor? Carry unanimously.
And your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2017-3362, a bylaw to amend the investment policy, bylaw number 2003-3015, for the purpose of increasing the maximum dollar value of any one issuer be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship. Call to question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Thank you. Now go on to the next bylaw change, amend the zoning bylaw.
Your worship, I'd like to excuse myself from preliminary duties.
Okay.
I will also, your worship.
We still have a quorum to members of council have left as notice of conflict of interest. So with this, we still go forward. Mr. Hardy.
Your worship, the, the application is a request to rezone the building at 343 Second Street Northeast. Lots one to three inclusive, block 75, plan S 4840, from an R2 residential zoning to an NC neighborhood commercial zoning. Staff have reviewed, staff have advertised this, this amendment and, and basically there have been no, there have been no comments or, sorry, the comments, this is what is to happen and any comments or concerns are to be submitted for October 9th, 2017 council meeting. At this time, staff are recommending that council give the first reading for this zoning by law amendment and direct staff to proceed with the advertisement of the public hearing to be held on Monday, October 9th, 2017. If the rezoning is approved, then the owner will proceed with making application for a discretionary use permit as an office for administration is discretionary under the NC zone.
I'm prepared to make a motion, first of all, it should be Tuesday, October 10th, October 9th is a sad holiday.
Thank you, worship.
That bylaw number 2017-3363, a bylaw to amend City of Waverham zoning bylaw 2003-2099, for the purpose of rezoning 343 Second Street Northeast, lot one to three inclusive, block 75, plan S 4840, from residential two to NC neighborhood commercial to be read a first time and direct staff to proceed with advertisement of the public hearing to be held Tuesday, October 10th.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to ask the city manager or clerk to just sort of explain the parking requirements that come along with, with this, with this kind of a rezoning where we're going to put a commercial property into sort of a residential neighborhood. And I know that there are some requirements and I, I suspect this one is going to meet them. I just want to make sure that we fully understand that.
Your worship, I don't have the, three year worship to the, to the council, I don't have that information in front of me, but however, I will ensure that, that we address that coming forward with our report.
Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? This is, we will be having a council meeting on this, October 10th, Tuesday, October 10th instead of the 9th. That's correct. And that has been so reflected into the motion that you have. Any further discussion? All in favor? First reading carried. Pardon me? Yeah, yes. So we'll make sure that we, we'll wait for a moment till we get back in here. Give us a moment, please. We now go to bylaw 2017-3364. This is rural fire and rescue service policy. Mr. Hardy.
Through you, your worship, I'm going to defer to the, to the fire chief who's put a lot of work into this and he's much more, much more accomplished in, in knowing what was, what went on and will be able to answer any of council's questions.
And this isn't just before we started, this is in reference to the fire agreements and also the rescue truck agreements? Yes? Fire chief.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. Before you today, we've come to the end of a long road. We've discussed this many times, rural fire and rural rescue agreements. We formalized it now. We've been into negotiations with our rural partners for quite a number of years now. It's actually one of the first things I did when I got here. But I say we've come to fruition. We've listened to their concerns. The advantages to the city, this is, this is a document that we can use as a go-forward basis. It allows us to have a formalized policy. It allows us to use assessed values, which was quite a sticking point in the past, the past, these agreements were based upon population figures. Okay? This allows us to go for multi-year contracts. The, the policy is worded in such an aspect as two schedules, a schedule A and a schedule B. Schedule A is for rural rescue services only and schedule B is for rural fire and rescue services only. And in the, in the policy, you will see the fees accordingly and things like that.
Your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that bylaw 2017-3364, a bylaw to establish guidelines with respect to providing fire and rescue services outside city limits be read a first time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call to question, all in favor? Yes.
Thank you, worship. I make a motion that the bylaw number 2017-3364, thanks, your counsel. A bylaw to establish guidelines with respect to providing fire and rescue services outside city limits be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call to question, all in favor?
And a motion that bylaw 2017-3364, a bylaw to establish guidelines with respect to providing fire and rescue services outside of the city of Waverham be given three readings at this meeting.
I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor?
Your worship, a motion that bylaw number 2017-3364, a bylaw to establish guidelines with respect to providing fire and rescue services outside city limits be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor? Carry unanimously.
Your worship, I just have one question for Chief Simon. What are you going to do in your spare time now, chief?
That's the other 50 jobs that I've been putting off just to get this thing done. Thank you.
As mayor of the city of Waverham, plus on the representative, on behalf of the council, we thank you for all the efforts that you've put into this. This also helps to establish better relationships with our rural friends and we know that we are moving forward from this point on in a direction we have got to stay bold there. We thank you for all your work.
Thank you, your worship, members of council.
Chief, fire, your worship, I couldn't leave this one alone. Thanks for putting the fire out, chief.
Thank you for your kind words, counselor.
From here, from here, we move forward to old business. One of the things that we've been dealing with for an awful long time has, and hopefully we are nearing an end, Mr. Hardy, is our septic receiving station, which again, we are dealing with our friends in the R M of City of Waverham, I should say the R M of Waverham. So can you give us this report as to what was going on with this receptor receiving station?
Thank you, your worship, and my, my apologies in advance to council that some of this information wasn't able to make it in a timely manner to the package. As you know, we're going to work on that as part of our moving forward on our strategic directions. But anyway, your worship, the purpose of the report that's been, been put in front of you is to, to, to see if we can get council's endorsement of some of the specifics necessary to locate a septic haulage hauling facility within the city of Waverham, on Waverham property with a partnership with the R M of Waverham. City staff and R M staff, after working at this for a number of years, met early in September to move forward on partnering the development of this facility, which would tie into the city's wastewater management system. The key summary of what the discussions were between staff and are being put forward both to this council and to the R M council this evening are to put forward some points on, on agreement for review by the two councils. These points would be that the regional municipality of Waverham would build the facility with assistance from the federal government. The location of the facility is recommended on city property adjacent to the public works facility with access off of 16th Street. The R M would contract with the city to operate the septic facility based on the city receiving a share of the revenues. And the city and the R M would have a joint committee manage the facility for the purposes of setting rates and allowing access to commercial haulers in the region. The city will, would come up with a rate that won't impact them negatively because obviously these, these fees will be passed on to the end consumer. And so the recommended starting rate from our acting city engineer is somewhere in the area of five to six dollars per cubic meter, which will repay the R M for their investment of the project and the city would earn revenue to cover our costs and generate some additional revenues. The rates should have an inflation factor for the next two or three years of about 2%. So the timing for the completion of this project to be eligible for federal funding is March 15th, 2018. So basically we're putting, we're sort of fast-tracking this to you, to the, to the two councils this evening to sort of say, are we, are we in general agreement with this and can we move forward to get an agreement or agreement signed for the operation and management of this regional septic facility? And as a result of what we're doing and once we, if we are able to move this forward, once we get an agreement in place, basically we would want to have an information meeting scheduled with, with some invitations to interested commercial haulers, the neighboring R Ms and the Water Security Agency on the operations of this facility. So the, what I'm just asking for in terms of a recommendation from the city is that city council endorse the principles for the construction, operation and governance of a regional septic hauling facility and direct the city and R M staff to develop agreements for its construction and operation.
Mr. Richards.
Your worship, it is with great jubilation that I would make a motion that city council endorse the principles for the construction, operation and governance of a regional septic hauling facility and direct the city and R M staff to develop agreements for the regional septic facility.
Mr. Chessel.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Your worship. Good. Thank you very much, your worship. I'd like to commend our new city manager for taking this bull by the horns and getting this project to this stage this quickly. I appreciate that very much and I think our partners in, in, in that industry and also in the R M do.
The question that may be put forward is that with this, this is not going to put any undue hardship on our sewage system?
That's correct, your worship, to you. The, the, the location was strategically in place in such a way that basically by the time that any septic were to be, you know, has the ability of being tested as well. But any acceptable septic would be in the position that by the time it got down to the downstream, it would be sufficiently diluted that there would be no impact on the, on the environment as long as the, as long as the septic was not of a, of a, of a toxic nature, which is basically what the haul, commercial haulers are licensed to commit to.
The other question I meant, the other adding to that, it is not by adding, allowing the R M to dump into our lagoons, this is not going to put us at a disadvantage of overloading our lagoon's capacity and such?
No, it's not, your worship. It's, it's sufficient that, it's sufficient that as we get to the, as we get to even the projected limit, we're still well within, it's still putting very little in the, in committing, sorry, it's, it's actually increasing the overall toxicity of, you know, very, very little. It's, it's not going to have, it's not going to have an adverse impact, even if there's, and we have, we have the ability as we're governing this also to regulate it as well. And the design, we know what the limitations are in terms of what could and should be going in there. And when, and by having the, and by having the hauling station close to the public works yard, basically we'll be able to monitor that, monitor that very easily in terms of the amount of, the amount of septic that goes into the system from there.
I was looking at the volume wise, the volume wise, it's not going to have an adverse effect on our lagoon's capacity either, is it?
That's correct.
That is correct, your worship.
Any further discussion, Mr. Bailey?
I think one thing that we've seen in this report that we should note, a certain amount of this is from within the city of Waverham, because we have areas of Waverham that are on septic systems, the west side of the city here. And so a certain amount of this is from the city of Waverham also. So all the reports that we read and seen, I think we understand that it's, it's a very low volume impact on our total facility.
Thank you, your worship. That is correct.
Further questions, comments? If not, I will call the question, all in favor? Carry unanimously. Very good. Our next one that has been a longstanding one that we must address here in council and we ask council to address this as this is a longstanding, is our CPR crossing Queen Street. We have to have an update as to what are we going to do about this?
Three year worship, the report that I put in front of council this evening is, is more of an update in terms of giving you a sense of what staff action has been taken on this matter since the last council meeting. So of course, we recognize that the issue of the CPR crossing Queen Street relates to public safety for pedestrian and vehicular traffic at that area. And the increase in rail traffic has prompted us to look at alternative measures that can be implemented in either maintaining or closing the crossing. After the last council meeting, staff made inquiries regarding the potential movement of the, the shelter belt or the tree belt adjacent to the crossing, west of that crossing. We have confirmed that the trees are located on private property owned by the, the owner at 325 Queen Street and we're following up with that owner to confirm that we have the ability to remove the trees at the city's expense. Staff will also identify appropriate signage to communicate caution as high-speed trains more frequently use the crossing as a result of those changes. Staff have also made inquiries about making application to the Federal Rail Safety Improvement Program. This program provides grant and contribution funding to improve rail safety and reduce injuries and fatalities related to rail transportation. It funds not only public education, it also will help fund safety improvements to existing rail lines as well as the closure of grade crossings and basically initiatives to, to raise awareness about rail safety issues. So the potential project process, if, if we were to look at being able to come to an agreement about what at the end of the day council wants to do between these two different options, is we have, we have, we have the ability to make an application and then there would be an inspection by a Transport Canada Railway Inspector. And so we could be basically even today be asking for that to occur, which is, which is, which is automatically occurs obviously when there's a, when it follows a collision, including recommendations which are made by the Transportation Safety Board of Canada. So in effect, we So in effect, we get another, another opinion on what the possibilities are and what the options are, and what would need to be, what would need, what could or should be done at that particular intersection. Now, once one of the, once we've identified, once the city's identified that it wants to pursue one of these types of projects, that inspector may meet on site with our officials and other involved authorities to review the proposed work, and basically do that third, do that due diligence, or help with the due diligence in terms of safety to both rail, to rail and the, and public interests are taken care of. And so what, the project deadline for next year, the fiscal year, starting in April 2018 to 19, was on August 1st and is closed. But the city can submit an application to be considered for funding in the next fiscal year before August of next year, which gives us the time to do the planning, come to a decision either way, and be able to meet the requirements, the federal requirements for having this done by 2021. So I've provided here for council's information, the link to, that explains the programs, which has, as I said, both public education and project components which council can take a look at. And so in providing this update, your worship, the recommendations I just making is that that you receive the report, and can council be asked to be kept apprised on the progress on the matter of the immediate, the immediate needs of removing the tree belt from the adjacent property, and getting further assistance and advice from Transport Canada on the matter.
Your worship, I'll make a motion, and I'd like to come back for discussion once it's seconded on the floor. The motion to receive the report of the city manager on the CPR crossing at Queen Street, and to be kept apprised on the progress of the matter of removing the tree belt from the adjacent property and getting further assistance and advice from Transport Canada on this matter.
I'll second it, your worship.
Mr. Bailey, second it. First off, Mr. Mickel, and then Mr. Richards.
Thank you, worship. First of all, I want to thank our manager, sorry, for looking into Transport Canada's safety. I thank you so much for bringing that to our meeting. However, that is a long term, in my opinion. And that's great, but short term, and you identify that under background, remove the trees and appropriate signage to communicate a high-speed activity. I would hopefully that is done in this 2017 calendar year. We have to do something that we've never done over the many last seventeen, sixteen and a half years. So can I, would it be safe to say, your worship, to our manager, that this can be done by the end of October?
2017?
Through your worship, certainly, we can, we can, we're making the efforts, and we've made the inquiry of the property owner, whose position at this point, we want to be able to get involved in order to get this, to get this done. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Richards.
Thank you, your worship. City Manager Hardy, it's interesting to me that the Transport Canada funding is available to improve the crossing. It isn't just available for the closing of crossings. Is that right?
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. There's two options that, that will, that can be funded through this program in consultation, you know, after there's been an assessment done and received, received feedback from the, the necessary, like for the Transport Canada Department.
Jim, what else?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Also, city manager, when more of the data comes back, and I appreciate Councilor Mickel's urgency to have this done by the end of October, I think that that's pretty realistic, and I'd like to see that happen. I'd also like to see when we come back to talk about this some more in the future, when Transport Canada is being discussed, that we don't just look at that intersection in isolation. And I'd like to see some, some reporting on traffic counts, and what kind of traffic is going through that intersection that's going to get diverted. If we do decide down the road that closure is something we want to look at, we've got to have more than just some near miss counts at that. We've got to have a whole, a whole slate of data addressing what's going to be the impact on the, on the intersections down the road. I don't think that we can just look at this in isolation. So just as we, as we are expediting that process of getting those, those trees removed, and maybe getting some signage up and trying to improve what we have, which I believe is the right thing to do, I would like to see us starting to look at a total picture here, so that the next time our friends from CP Rail are back in town, we're not just talking about a single statistic. Thank you, your worship.
Your worship, City Manager Hardy, I'd like to also bring up the fact that in the discussions we did have with CP, they made it very clear that the safety of the citizens in Weyburn is first in their mind, but when asked the question about speeding up the freight trains as they come through town, that's one of the primary reasons why they would like to close that, is so the trains can actually be going faster as they go through town. I just want people to remember that when we bring this up, because it is, there is two reasons why this is up. And I think primarily for CP, it's, they're worried about the safety of the people, but they're also worried about the cost of their operation too, so let's not lose sight of that. I would not like to, is any more comments? I would not like to lose sight of what is in front of us, but I mean, at the same time when we talk about these crossings, not only this crossing, but we also have the issue with the 16th Crossing, where that one is blocked and traffic backs up on the highway, which is quite, they say there's a side way, but there's, you'll see that traffic gets backed up quite far along the way. I mean, this is, this whole idea of our crossings, South Hill's left, as we calculated roughly, four hours without essential services because of the number of trains coming through. So when Transport Canada, and we talk about this, improving the, the whole crossings, this should also be a thing that we're looked at as a whole, not only just this one isolated Queen Street. Let's start looking at the whole issue that we have with this crossings. Leaving our South Hill, I shouldn't say South Hill, Douglas Heights, Douglas Heights, that we used to refer to it as, the one side of the city, four hours without essential services, fire, ambulance, police, over there, a lot of stuff can happen during this, four hour times. And we have to address this as the council, because fortunately, right now, we've been fortunate, nothing has really occurred, but we have to look to the future and plan for the future as the city builds. And as you know, there are new sites, being more population to be coming up there, that's going to be happening. So these are things that we like to see. Any further discussion? With that, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. New business, development levy, bylaw 2014-3320, another one of the bylaws that we have discussed for a long time, and which many of our council discussed on the time of election. We are now at this level. Mr. Hardy.
Your worship, in bringing a staff report to council, I certainly feel that my extensive experience here in Weyburn of three weeks is going to be put to the test. But nonetheless, I do, I have provided that updated report, and again, I apologize for its lateness, but I will take the time to go through it, because I believe there are some pieces there that after, after reviewing some of the discussions that have gone on in past, in past council meetings, I thought I might put in, weigh in from a, from a staff perspective. So, so basically, we know that the purpose of this report is to propose revisions for consideration by council after staff have conducted a review of the existing bylaw to reduce those fees based on a reconsideration of the city's project rates of growth, and for specific circumstances which have been made, made mention of during the earlier discussions of council. So council had earlier directed staff, and in particular, the acting city engineer to review the bylaw with a view to reducing the existing fees which were identified in 2013. The current bylaw is based upon a 2013 report which computed the levy based on a higher annual growth rate of around 6% for the next number of years. The recent downturn was not foreseen, and as a result, a more realistic and sustainable rate of 22% has been suggested by the acting city engineer. I, having acquired this file, requested the, the engineer to recalculate the levy to include projects for the refurbishment of replacing existing linear assets, including trunk sewers and storm mains that would be impacted by growth in the growth areas of the city. And the revised information is attached and appended from the report from the assistant city manager. So council has, you know, council has generally directed staff to look at the removal of all fees for expansions of existing properties where there are no direct impacts on city's infrastructure, including all existing service properties which do not require an upgrade in capacity as a means to stimulate growth of existing commercial and industrial properties. So the purpose, just to, just to go back and to step back, the purpose of charging an off-site development fee or subdivision servicing fee is to assist the city in paying expended, past, now required, and future capital costs for providing, alternating, or expanding, upgrading infrastructure works which are located outside the boundaries of the development land, which directly or directly of which the, of which the existence of that property gets a direct or indirect service or benefit from the development. So in many cities in Saskatchewan, the principle that growth pays for growth is a normal practice. If it's the desire of council to provide some change to the balance as the means of providing an incentive to business expansion the next three years before a regular review of development levies would be an appropriate period. So in terms of the alternatives that have been outlined, I just wanted to identify that there are four that basically staff have looked at and will want to, want to comment on. First is the reduction of the revised levy. And as a result of the city engineer's recalculation, we are, we have identified a revised figure of $76,440 per hectare, and the rationale, as I said, is outlined in their revised calculation. Secondly is the elimination of the $12.21 per square foot levy on commercial and industrial expansions on existing service properties. The elimination of development levies on existing service properties of all classes. And the fourth, which was, which is, which has been a practice in other areas, is that a case-by-case assessment of the development levy based on the need for additional infrastructure capacity by category of development. So when it comes to the creation of a development levy, we look at roads, water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, miscellaneous projects, and basically a small amount of administrative cost. In terms of the, in terms of the policy or the discussion that's gone on in council, staff supports the proposed adjustments in alternatives one and two as a temporary measure until the next scheduled review in 2021 to support the expansion of existing commercial industrial activities, as long as there are no discernible impacts on current infrastructure levels, and to depend on servicing agreements and fees to pay for site-specific impacts. So in other words, we're, we've generally agree, we generally would, would say that this is a good move as a temporary measure to ensure that, you know, one, after we've knocked it down because of the, the over, the over, overstatement of what growth was going to be, basically, we think this is, basically, we've looked at it and feel that it's a good temporary measure. We don't necessarily think it's a long-term measure, and three years is a good enough time to review it. But in today, in today's economy, it's probably, it's probably, it's probably a good thing to do in terms of today's environment to sustain and support growth within, within the city. One of the thing, one of the, the third element, which is basically the elimination of development fees on existing service properties of all classes, is that I, that I wanted to make note, is that the blanket elimination of these development on existing service properties is cause for concern, is we may have large tracts of land serviced and currently unserviced, and I'll give the example of a former agricultural property where there was a farmhouse, and therefore technically it has been serviced, that in effect, that, that whole property becomes unavailable to, may become unavailable to development fees, and, you know, there's a, or there's something that's a small building is put on one part, and then basically, there's no development fees, you only have one chance to get it. And therefore, at the end of the day, that, that is a concern that we basically have in terms of a blanket elimination of the development fees on existing service properties. So the suggestion that staff has with council, consider whether or not the existence of a, of a level of, you know, some properties that, eliminating the properties on as long as they're less than two acres, or one acre, or one and a half, whatever, we put that forward as an option for council to consider. And, and then with the final alternative, as we said, is another alternative that I know had not been discussed by council, but is also another way of making some adjustments. So generally, in terms of looking at this and being able to do this, once we get, what we're asking for is council to have the discussion before we actually develop the bylaw, and just give, give the staff some direction on those alternatives in putting them into the format of a bylaw, and then going through the process of providing notice and having a public meeting with respect to the changes to this bylaw which are required under the Planning and Development Act. So that's my, that's my report, your worship, and I'm open to any questions or willing, certainly would like to hear the discussion of council on this matter.
Well, this is a very long sought-after, if you want to call it, or long one coming. And I'm sure that we should have a lot of interesting comments there. Just to lead off on the comment, the one comment that I would, that I would like to make as to get, spark interest in talking, is that that was based on a 6% growth, which was astronomical, and I remember seeing that, that even on some of the better cities where they were looking only at not even 2%, but being a 1.5. So this, based on a 2% growth, is even, I think Stats Canada came out, our last one was like 0.75 to almost 1%. 2% is even a very, very strong growth rate. That'd be like 200 people a year coming into Weyburn, which is 200, 300 people, which is quite a strong growth rate out there, which I don't even know is even realistic at that point. But it's a good thing to shoot for, but I do not know if it's realistic for even this rate. With that being said, I turn it over to Mr. Chesel.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the city council support the recommendations as amended, and direct the city clerk to prepare a bylaw and provide public notice for the adaptation of a revised development levy and fees bylaw to be effective on all approved development applications upon adoption.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion?
Now, and I apologize, I was out, I should have spoken till this point. Go ahead, Mr. Richards.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to encourage all the members of council to stop and, and not get too excited about things like the prospect of agricultural property, property coming into the city, and somebody putting a tiny building up, and then tearing it down and putting a big development on it. I said earlier tonight, I would sleep very, very well if that happened. I think I would encourage that, in fact. I would sleep very well if somebody put a large development, and they somehow managed to not pay that $12.21 a square foot, so long as they fit within the guidelines that we had laid out earlier this year when we were putting this together. I think that we can sometimes get caught up in, I would agree with the mayor when he says, 2% is very aggressive. That is a very aggressive growth rate in today's economy. This bylaw is reviewed on a regular basis. Next up for review, I believe the city clerk said, 2021. It's only four years away from a review again. If we find ourselves growing at 2% and 3% and 4% and 5%, and we find out that this development levy isn't going to be adequate, that would be another great problem for us to have to face. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. This has been under my saddle for a very, a long time, and I'm glad we finally got it at this stage at council. The report of the 6% growth on the initial report where our development fee was raised, I believe from about 40-some thousand roughly to the 86, also had some factors in those numbers of projects that were unaccountable for, they were off in the blue. And I relate to the one of the common water supply from Rafferty Dam for the cities of Estevan. Estevan and Waverne and all the communities between. That was based in that development fee, so there's just more than the 6% growth in that. My main issue all the time, I understand the need for the development fee for property, where that number is a realistic number, I'm total of support of that. I really struggle with the $12.21. That has been a menace to this city for people wanting to expand and do business, and we have lost several businesses going elsewhere, and we've lost several buildings not being built where we gain the yearly tax revenue off of that, which is our stable support for taxation for our city. And so there are things in place with this. If someone has an existing service lot that puts a new building on, my understanding of the bylaw is that if there was a building on there, they get credit, but they have to pay a percentage of, for the service. It goes to taking down houses and putting apartments up. We've addressed that, what the cost of that is per door. So I think we've done our homework between this council and previous councils of addressing those things. The $12.21 for someone to add and don't need any infrastructure, it's 100%, we gain employment, we sell materials, and we gain taxation. And I think it's a win-win. Yes, maybe they're going to use the roads a little bit more to it, but I'll give up using the roads a little bit more to have taxation of $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 on a building forever.
Mr. Mickle.
Thank you, worship. The question I have is, we have four developers in our, thank you, Counselor Chessel, in our city right now. So with us reducing the off-site development levy from 86 to 76, is that going to affect these developers that were locked in at the older price?
Mr. Van Betje.
Thank you, worship. I can go along with Alternative 1 and 2, and I just have a question for our city manager, or not so much a question as a statement, I guess. So if a person has an existing property, it's a gas station, for instance, and they change that to a car wash, they will have to pay some development levy fee because it's going to increase the services at that property. Am I correct?
As long, yeah, and as long as the bylaw is basically puts that, makes sure that that trigger is in there, that where, and it basically doesn't, it doesn't mean there's an expansion where there's no impact, but as soon as there is an impact, yes, it triggers the fact that there's a review and that development fee has to be calculated, you know, and the differences, Counselor Bailey said, be calculated, and then it is assessed.
Because they will be using more water and sewer.
Correct.
Okay. On the third point about the elimination of development levy on existing service or non-service, I have a few problems with that. I think it unfairly advantages those people with the ones out that have bought new property in town that have paid the development levy. And I think that, I think the development levy is not to pay for roads. That's what your taxes are, to maintain the roads. The development levy, I think these people are going to come in, and I think the easiest way, we're going to be building a new addition to our water treatment plant. We're contemplating a fieldhouse. The people, the residents of Waverne have paid for that already in the last 10, 15 years. We've saved up money and we've paid for that. So anybody that comes in that does not pay a development levy, a new developer, gets that water treatment plant for free, gets that, if we build a fieldhouse, gets that for free. Whereas the citizens of Waverne have already paid for that. So I think the reason that development levy is there is that they can buy participation into that existing capital that the residents of Waverne have paid for.
Mr. Richards, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. I can appreciate Counselor Van Betje's take on this one, and I would agree, and I don't think we've ever said, like you said, if someone purchased a gas station, they took that down and they put up a car wash, there would certainly be a levy due to them. But if somebody purchased a vacant lot in the city that was serviced, and they put up a 5,000-square-foot retail operation, they would be subject, as it sits today, to a $60,000 development levy. So that is, that's punitive, and I believe that would get in the way. I believe people will make decisions not to do that business because it doesn't make sense. To say that somebody gets in for free is dangerous, I think, because lots of folks come into the city and do new things in a mall, for example, or an existing place, and they don't pay a development levy. So I think we have to be cautious about that kind of a mindset. I agree with you on that first part. If somebody takes an existing property and converts its, the nature of its use to something that requires an immense amount of upgrading to service, there should be a fee to that. But we have to be careful, I think, on some of this vacant land. I think it warrants more discussion.
Mr. Chessel, or Mr. Richards?
Your worship, thanks. I do agree with most of the points made here, and I do like how there are alternatives. The one that really I find is something that we need to consider is the case-by-case assessment. Any of the existing businesses in town within the city limits or using the city services, if they make any changes to their business or additions to their business, they're required to approach the city at that time to get a building permit or a change of business licensing. At that time, we can assess what business is going in there, and if there's going to be an extra burden put on the infrastructure of Waverne, we can look at it at that time. And if the city feels that there is going to be a burden, then we could address the levy at that time rather than just blanketing everybody with a levy that comes in here. I think it may be a hindrance to some businesses coming into town having a fixed levy, but I think we need to be open to make sure that we don't stop people from considering us.
Mr. Van Betje.
And I think our city manager will probably find this out, but I do think that it would be contravening the Cities Act, that you can't pick and choose which properties you can charge the levy to.
If you base it on the duty put on the city services, you should have some flexibility in what you charge. People building an addition onto an office and adding one washing facility should not have to pay $12.21 for an additional 5,000 square feet for one washing facility. That just doesn't make sense.
Mr. Van Betje.
I think, we'll have more conversation on this, I'm sure. But I do feel that, I'm not trying to collect extra dollars, and we're not trying to add an extra levy on to people just as a money grab, but I do think we have to be careful that we're fair to the other, you know, to the people, the other property owners and developers that have bought property outside of the existing city land. And it's mostly these undeveloped properties in town, that there aren't too many, but I think we do have to seriously consider whether we do charge a levy on those pieces.
Mr. Richards.
One more, then I promise I'll quit, your worship. Thank you very much.
No, this is what we want to debate. Go ahead.
And I can appreciate what Counselor Van Betje was saying, and certainly we do have to have a very good look at this. And I think you're right, that, you know, it warrants a lot of it. And Counselor Chessel's talked in the past about, you know, a bit of a deep dive, maybe the city manager could get staff to perform. You know, and how many of these properties there might be out there that are going to be impacted by something like this? Because I don't imagine it's going to be, like Counselor Van Betje said, a big number, right? There's going to be a few, and anytime we annex new land into the city, you know, we subject them right away to that development levy of currently 80-some-one thousand dollars, and we may make an alteration to that. So you're right, there is certainly a cost to do that. So I think we have to have a little more fulsome look at this, but I can't support that, the $12.21. That'd be done, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Three, your worship, Counselor, Counselor Richards makes, you know, has asked, you know, that, and Counselor Van Betje has well, has raised two issues, which I think that we can, you know, we can still move forward with putting a draft bylaw up and for public discussion. But there are probably two things that, based on this discussion, that I see that staff can do in supporting council with some good information to make a good decision on this. The first is, I would probably, I would spend just a little bit of money just talking to our solicitor to get a view on, you know, making sure that the classifications are appropriate and basically meet the standards of the act. That, you know, that's a good due diligence thing. And as well to do a follow-up on the suggestion made by Counselor Richards with respect to identifying any potential properties within the current, within the city limits currently, which may be, and may have some, this may raise the issue on in terms of where they go.
Any other comments? Mr. Chessel.
I'll just comment that Counselor Richards is alive, probably spent eight years of our lives on this discussion. So I tried to get in earlier, he said everything I said, he's just quicker, like a game show hitting the button than I am. But I do echo much of what I heard. I understand Counselor Van Betje's concerns, definitely one and two to me need to go. Number three, I'm still going to agree to disagree with staff and management on that one, but I think there still can be work, work be done on there. And I do agree, I believe it would be worth taking a look at what properties are out there. Are we talking about two? Are we talking about 25? I, you know, it would be good to have that number, and I don't know if that was ever looked at when this was initially, came into the original bylaw. So maybe that's something before we jump too heavy, we know what we're looking at.
You know, and to, not to everyone over on this side of the table attacking that side of the table, but we're just saying, the idea of saying, well, there's the other ones that have paid this already, and now this can be reduced. It was unfortunate at the time, it can be said on the same idea, that at one time there was lots that didn't pay this, and all of a sudden this came on, this levy got introduced, so now they were put at, these people were put at a disadvantage. We were, we saw, which in my opinion, in your opinion, and not of the council, but in my own personal opinion, that 6% was far too unrealistic, even at the greatest growths. That is a really super high realistic, echoing what you had said, talking about projects of expanding Nickel Lake and going to this, things that were extremely high. So then all of a sudden we have this escalated rate, now we're trying to bring it back down again, and now we're caught in this whole trap that some people paid because they wanted to move forward, they didn't want to sit with their businesses stagnant and wait this out for how many years until it changed. So now there's this catch. So this is the dilemma that we're in. And yes, there's going to be some people that are going to be upset because they paid the high fees, and now we're lowering them back down, but it is again, simply a way that we have to try to, duty of this council, I shouldn't say the duty, but the kind of mood of this council is to do something about this levy, adjust it, and try to find that great, I hope the staff will try to work diligently to find that good level and how to do it fair and equitable to all.
I think what we have to have in mind in doing this, wherever we end up with this, is that we have to keep an attitude of being open for business in our city. And having an attitude that we want to invite people here and encourage them here, doing that without selling the farm, if you will, with that. There might be room for something in there, I think, the thorough, thorough look at this. As far as the number of properties, I think our number would be more, because if you're looking at someone expanding on the back of their store, on the back of their business, that would open it to virtually everybody. So I think our number of identifying properties, I don't know exactly how you're going to do that.
Mr. Chessel.
Your worship, Counselor. I think it's more the open vacant lots is what our concern is. If there's any open vacant lots in the downtown core, any highway commercial that are existing that are city, or maybe non-city-owned lots that have been, that have been sitting for years.
I see that, how you're making it.
Mr. Richards.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I think we were saying that, you know, everybody I think is okay with removing the $12.21 on an expansion, whereas a little bit of, you know, consternation is if the lot is empty or if a building comes down, maybe, and then we can't, you're right, we can't.
I can appreciate that, yep.
No further discussion at this point. Call the question. All in favor? We move forward with taking a look, further look, and the next step in revising the levy by law. With that, the inquiries and announcements, the inquiries of the city manager.
Your worship, it just dawned on me as we were going through the meeting today, that today is September 11th, and I wonder if there would be an opportunity for us all when we go home to our families to just think about the events of September 11th, 2001.
Fire chief.
Your worship, thank you. If I can just indulge with an announcement, excuse me. This weekend, September 15th to the 17th is the SFA Fall Fire School. We talked about it before, I've been before you and seeked your permission, which was kindly granted, thank you. We were striving for 300 participants, between students and tutors, we've hit 285. I apologize for my rumors, I was working on rural fire agreements. But yeah, it's an exciting time, we invite you all to come out. I know the mayor's speaking on Saturday night, a bit of a banquet and things like that. There's a trade show happening also, and I will forward you all through Amber where the classes are taking place. You're more than welcome to come and join us. Had a discussion with the media today about it, things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Another little note here is that tomorrow night, there'll be a change command of the cadets corps, the legion tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. So all those who wish to see the new change command for their cadet corps, although it's, the numbers have been low, they're trying to, most certainly with the change command, look forward to building numbers here for the cadets. If you noticed in the paper, some of the, there was one of our cadets from Waverne did a whole Europe, England tour there for a long time. We had another one that went to camp, or a very, these are very good things for our youth to participate in. Anything else, gentlemen? Then, the notice, there's no notice of motions. Committee of the whole, Mr. Hardy, would you like?
Your worship, I would ask that council consider going into committee of the whole for the purposes of a discussion under the local authority Freedom and Information Protection Act with respect to land acquisition and land negotiations.
At that point in time, then we may ask all staff, all news, to step out for just a moment, please, while we go into committee of whole. This is under the use of land.
Need a motion, your worship.
Need a motion? Okay.
Your worship, I'll make a motion, and we go into, I'm sorry, Mr. Hardy, are we going into camera or going into committee of the whole? I'll make a motion, we move into committee of the whole.
Secondor?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Carrie, we'll just shut down camera for a moment, and then we'll be back again.
Worship, I'd like to make a motion to move out of committee of the whole.
I'll second that, your worship.
Okay.
Your worship, I have a, in reporting out to council, I have a, staff has made a recommendation with respect to the purchase of land in the, in the area, in an undescribed parcel at this point, close to 704 Elgin Street, and the city has provided for the purchase of that sale from the applicant with conditions. And so we just need a motion to, to, excuse me, to accept the recommendation of staff.
Worship, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of staff for the sale of this property.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion? Open.
Yeah, thank you, worship. The question I would have, since we're talking about this development levy that we're going to put in act hopefully in two weeks, this transaction maybe have something to do with it? Would that be true, manager?
Your worship, we can, we can, we, oh, sorry. Your worship... Your Worship, we can basically inform the person who wishing to purchase the property that the city would make that offer to them after we have discussed and completed the discussions with respect to that development levy.
Thank you.
All in favor? Carrie, no, obviously. Mr. Hardy, one last comment that you have?
Yes, Your Worship, Your Worship, the, with respect to council meeting today, I note that, that we did not have an administrative committee meeting beforehand, and council has had some general discussions about making some adjustment, potential adjustments to its committees and to its procedural bylaw. My, my recommendation to council is that they set a, that they set a meeting for Monday, September the 25th, at, commencing at 5:00 PM, and at which time I will be presenting a motion to council and a bylaw to create a priorities and strategic planning committee which will meet after the council, after the council meeting is concluded.
Very good.
So Roy, just for clarification for media and everyone out there, because this was a different way of handling a land situation.
Yes.
I guess I know why, but can you?
Certainly.
Illustrate it for them all?
Certainly. Three, Your Worship, and to the media present and to the public that are going to be viewing this, the Cities Act requires that most, most all of business of council is conducted in open session. So when there is a time for, where, in which we go into a closed session where we can be talking about the negotiation of a piece of land, or about labor relations, or those types of things, council goes into closed session or committee of the whole. And basically, when it's completed its business, it comes out and reports back on what, what results are being put in place as a result of those discussions. So there's a reporting out of what happens. And so we had a small adjournment in which we discussed this item, which was of a confidential nature, which is protected under, under the Cities Act, which is allowed to occur under the Cities Act, and we've come back out of that council meeting, and we are going to try in, in terms of looking at making our processes as accountable as possible to the public, that we conduct our business as much as possible and make sure that we report back on items which have to be, you know, which are decided or staff are given direction during that, during that closed portion. And that is reported out in the, in the minutes of the, in the minutes of the, of the council session, and those minutes which are recorded during the closed session, the council will pass at a subsequent meeting of council, but those minutes do remain closed and are subject to, you know, and are subject to review by when there is a request through the, through the provincial ombudsman requesting that, you know, that there be a review that we were doing, we did our business in private appropriately. So we're just making sure that we're adjusting, and we're adjusting our process to ensure we're in line with the current Cities Act. And what you will find is that under certain circumstances, when it comes to things like labor negotiations, employee relations, talking about staff, talking about negotiations, talking about land acquisition, talking about legal issues, those are ones in which council goes into private session and can have that discussion and get advice from their staff and from their solicitor, and basically those, that discussion can take place. But after that session closes, if there's any motions to be made, those motions have to be made in council, in the council meeting and passed by council, them knowing what the discussion was, but basically providing, you know, direction that this piece of business is to be concluded, or it provides direction to staff to proceed with the transaction.
Thank you.
Very good. And with that, we call a conclusion to our council for this September 11th, 2017. I therefore move the meeting adjourned.